Good afternoon and welcome everyone to our regular council meeting. We will stand for a prayer by Henry Foster, Greater First Baptist. After that, Ronald Robinson will lead us in the pledge and I ask you to remain standing after that.
Remember the following families prayer list Eric Hilliard, Barry King, Betsy Leonard, Jerry Gordon family, Thomas Earl T. Board, McCoy and Junior family, Gary Coleman, Brandy Richardson Graham family, Lisa Cross, Montez Hargrove, Latirius family, Mark Perryman, and Gore McKay. Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, first of all, we want to say thank you, Lord, and we want to give you honor and glory and praise for the God that you are, for sending your son to die for our sins and sending us the Holy Spirit to live by it. Lord, we thank you for giving us another opportunity, another day we never saw before, and we ask that you come in and rule this meeting, rule this panel, Lord, and you said you would be with us, you never leave us. We lean in depending on you, Lord, to get things done. In the mighty name of Jesus, for a second I pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Our flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Remain standing, please. We want to take a moment of silence in memory of former Councilman Jerry Gordon, so would Thank you. I want to say a word about Jerry before we go on. Those of you around this table know that there's many times I've messed up, I've skipped items, been straightened up about that numerous times, and I've mispronounced names and called people by the wrong names. When Jerry Gordon was appointed and he was sitting over there where Councilman Burns is, and it was one of the first meetings, and you know, I read, then I read the agenda item and said, do I have a motion? And then I say Councilman so-and-so makes the motion, and do I have a second council person, second? So I said, he made his first motion, and I said, Councilman Owen makes the motion, who in my mind was John Owens, the father of, let's see, Suzie Comstock. So we teased each other from that date forward, and he became a great friend, he respected me, I respected him, but he always did what is in the best interest for the citizens of Lewisburg, and I will miss him. Having said that, I also want to congratulate, I can't stop that from hearing my phone. Excuse me. The Tennessee Walking Horse Breeders Association celebrated their 90th birthday yesterday, and they've been an integral part of Lewisburg for 90 years, and we want to congratulate them. In 10 years, they'll be celebrating their 100th, of course, if my math is correct. The year after that, the Marshall County will celebrate their bicentennial, and the year following that will be Lewisburg bicentennial. But other announcements, are we going to make the presentation now, or are you going to read that?
We can do the presentation and I can't read the presentation.
We have a presentation, we're going to call him up?
Yes, Garrison Lewis, would you come?
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You go ahead.
My name is Garrison Lewis, I'm discussing my Eagle project and what I hope it will accomplish. My plan is to build what I'm calling tattered flag drop-off boxes. Tattered flag drop boxes, they will be a convenient way for people in our community to drop off any flag that is in need of proper retirement. The locations of these boxes are still being discussed, as of now, I plan to have them stationed at Marshall County Library, Columbia State Community College, and here at City Hall or the Courthouse Annex, I'm still trying to decide on that one. At the current moment, I am waiting to get my final signatures for my Eagle workbook, and after which, I will begin the process of fundraising and purchasing materials to complete construction. There have been a few setbacks due to school and work, but this semester coming to a close, I plan to get the project finished by the end of this month, guaranteeing extra time to complete the rest of my Eagle requirements.
Thank you.
Yes.
Now, you're the son of Matt?
Matt Lewis, yes.
Yes, and your grandfather was Mel?
Yes.
Yes, well, thank you for that, that's a good service, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gina's going to read the resolution.
Whereas the mayor and council wishes to allow the citizens of the city of Lewisburg to voice their opinions, concerns, or comments, and et cetera, and whereas the Lewisburg City Council holds a regular meeting the second Tuesday of each month. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Lewisburg that one, citizens will be allowed to address the council during citizens' input. Two, citizens addressing the council must abide by the following guidelines. Name, address be given for record, give subject matter description, understand there will be no voting, three minutes maximum speak time, address the council, not the audience, no personal attacks, no religious comments, and no more than three minutes on the same subject. Once the meeting is adjourned, we ask that everyone exit the meeting and the property in a timely manner. Thank you.
Okay. First item, citizen's input, yes, I'm sorry. Anyone?
Anyone with citizen's input, please.
Can I not invoke my right for the privacy of the public meetings of 72?
I couldn't hear you, sir.
Can I not invoke my rights for my, for my privacy of the public meetings? I don't want to reveal my address.
The resolution says name and address, so...
I suppose he could simply maybe write down his address and give it to one of us if he doesn't want to state it out loud.
Do that?
You willing to do that, sir? Okay, sir?
Okay, I am Dee Davis.
Pardon me?
My name is Dee Davis, and I am very disappointed on how divided this council is. While having dinner last Tuesday night, I overheard two council people, and I believe a guy from Andy Ogles office, while we was having dinner, I believe it was Ms. Thomas who had mentioned, Mr. Crutcher has called her everything but racist, she had also mentioned getting up dirt of Mr. Robinson's employment at the hood, and the dirty talk that my 13-year-old daughter had to hear. I'm not too happy, and you should be ashamed of yourselves.
Sir, no personal attacks.
Okay, okay, I was just saying in the group, the group, as the group, my 13-year-old daughter had to hear dirty talk that is only reserved for the bedroom, and I'm disgusted. My wife is disgusted. We could not enjoy our dinner without hearing that filth, and we couldn't enjoy our dinner without hearing council, city council business. That should be talked about amongst you guys, whatever issues you might have. It shouldn't bleed out to Alpatron. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Who else?
Hi there. So thank you for the opportunity to address the city council this evening. My name is Jessica Limbert, and I live at 802 Franklin Avenue. I'm here to request that council members vote no on the proposed resolution to support the Columbia Dam project on the Duck River, which is item Q on the agenda tonight. So here's what I know. This project has been tried before. Hundreds of people saw their families uprooted and their homesteads bulldozed to make way for the project that spanned 13,000 acres. TVA has conducted feasibility studies since the 1930s, all with the same result, it's not worth it. What cost taxpayers $83 million to construct between 1969 and 1983 is estimated to cost over $600 million now. Who's paying for that, and who will benefit from it? As far as I can tell, those in favor of the dam wouldn't see direct economic benefit from it, those of us in favor of the dam would see direct economic benefit from it, but I don't believe it favors the rest of us. I understand we're in a bind and need solutions to the water infrastructure issue. The city takes a view of development and is interested in inviting new industry and housing development, and we need water to do that. But the houses constructed five minutes from my house that are being sold starting in the 300,000s are unaffordable to me and my neighbors. Industry that pays folks less than $26 an hour is paying less than a living wage. How will additional industry and more homes that residents of Ward III are priced out of buying help us? It won't. Truly, this seems like a deficit of our creativity and imagination, as well as a conflict of our values. Don't be fooled by manufactured crises, we do have options. I attended the T-Deck Public Forum and listened to neighbors of mine who live in Marshall County offer solutions that don't require us to drain baby drain or chase after another short-term solution with very negative long-term consequences like the dam project. What else has been considered? The initial dam was demolished because two endangered species of mussel live in the Duck River, and damming it would threaten their ability to exist. The Duck River is the most biodiverse river in North America, and it is our responsibility to protect it. We must choose to protect the planet over making a profit. Without the river, we cease to exist, without our river, we don't have a home. Governor Lee has established the Duck River Watershed Planning Partnership via Executive Order 108. This 19-person team is tasked with considering both the ecological, environmental, and economic development impacts. Allow them to do their work before jumping on board with an already failed project. So I encourage the council, and particularly my council member, Mr. Ronald Robinson, to vote no on this proposed resolution, and then engage innovative and sustainable solutions to address this current need. I'm asking you to be pro responsible growth and sustainable infrastructure. The decisions that we make with regard to our water source today will impact the livelihoods of our children's, children's, children. Thank you.
Hey, y'all. My name's Jennifer Dotson, I live at 1317 Horseshoe Drive. I just basically want to follow up with what Jess just said, and hope that everyone on the council will look at other measures we can take for our water resources in the future. I've grown up on the Duck River my whole life, I've seen what industry has hap, what industry has caused to the duck when I was a child. We didn't swim or eat out of the area of the duck that I lived in. Now that I live, I grew up in Murray County, now I live here in Marshall County, I've been here about 10 years. This is something that I've been hearing leadership talk about for years, is wondering where we're going to get our water from. Is it going to be piped in from Pottsville? That was what we were told was going to happen, I don't know, back eight-plus years ago. That obviously is not what's happening. We have growth coming at us, not just from Marshall County, but from Murray County, all of the surrounding areas. We just need to look at other things before we jump on board with building this dam. Please look at other revenues, other ways of doing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Michelle Davis Head, my address is 1525 New Columbia Highway in Lewisburg. And I'd like to kind of approach the dam from a different perspective, too, actually. I was a loan officer for almost a decade here in Marshall County. I was fairly busy, nonstop, in Lewisburg, Chapel Hill, pretty much anywhere, we built the house. And I know how packed we were then, now we have three separate places putting up townhomes. And recently, I've been doing your orders for Walmart, DoorDash, things like that. You're not getting your orders completely filled because our grocery stores don't have the stuff. So my question would be, how are you going to fund all these other people, the roads, the stores? Where are we going to put them in school if children are here? I understand that the dam is a much-needed thing, possibly, and if you knew my father, he would probably kick my tail for being up here and saying that I didn't want a dam because he would have been the first one to be fishing on it, but I've built those houses, and I just worry about our town and our people. Like me, I live in an apartment, I don't live in a house, I couldn't afford a house either. And I have people calling me almost every week, asking if I know where they can get an apartment they can afford. So I think we need to think about affordable housing also, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eros Jowls, I live at 802 Franklin Avenue.
Say your name again, I can't...
Eros Jowls, Eros, like Eros. When it comes to the dam at the Duck River, Duck River has been fluctuating on and off in its levels for years. For over the last decade, though, the droughts has caused the levels to lower dramatically. I used to go down to Henry Horton State Park to the Duck River with my church, we did baptisms and all floating down the river. The same spots that we used to go to, it's barely any water there, you can literally see the ground. Used to, it would go over my head, it's not like that anymore. It's dropping drastically because we are growing, and we're drawing more and more, to the point, we're going to dry it up, you may not think so, but it happens. We're overusing our resources, and we need to come up with different ways. There are many countries that develop containing water, affixing roofs to collect rainwater, but we are right here in Tennessee, and you know, every summer, we go through drought. And so if we continue to do what we're doing, or set up a way that we're going to overdraw every drought, we're going to be down to water limitations. I mean, what limits are you going to put on the citizens about their water intake? We do have companies, such as Walker Diecasting, that uses a lot of water to work their motors, clean them out, I've worked there, so I know, they're not reusing the water, they're letting it go down the drains. So what are we doing? What is this town doing with its water? Like, literally, it can't be more important to make money than over the lives of our children. My children are here, I want their grandchildren to be able to be here, and it looks like we're not going to be able to do that in the future. And literally, down the road, four houses on one plot? Come on, it's getting ridiculous on overdevelopment. So, I mean, it can't be about money, it's got to be about the people that are already here.
Thank you. Anybody? Okay. You have before you the minutes, correct? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion. Councilwoman Crutcher seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Next item?
Item four, approval of bills and financial statements.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robertson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item five, oh, business, there's none. Item six, new business. Item A, request appointment of Steve Baird to fill the vacant seat of John Murphy by Mayor Jim Bingham, recommendation to council for approval, term is pleasure of the mayor and council.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilwoman Robinson makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Burns seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item B, request for the appointment of Councilman Ronald Robinson to the Cemetery Advisory Committee by Mayor Jim Bingham, recommendation to council for approval for term of office.
Motion.
Councilman Burns makes the motion, Councilman Crutcher seconds that motion, is there discussion? All the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item C, request for the reappointment of Donna Roberts to the Community Development Board for a new three-year term, as her current term expires on June 30, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Robinson makes the motion, is Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item D, request for the reappointment of Darian Taylor to the Community Development Board for a new three-year term, as his current term expires on June 30, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Councilman Crutcher makes the motion, second by Councilwoman Robinson, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item E, request for the appointment of Barbara Woods to the Community Development Board for a new three-year term, as her current term expires on June 30, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Councilman Crutcher makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second it.
Councilwoman Thomas seconds the motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item F, request for the reappointment of Affairs Philip to the Historic Zoning Commission for a new five-year term, as her current term expires on June 1, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Motion approved.
Councilman Burns makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Michael seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Aye.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item G, request for the reappointment of Barbara Woods to the Historic Zoning Commission for a new two-year term, as her current term expires on June 1, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Councilman Crutcher seconds the motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item H, request for the appointment of Councilman Ronald Robinson to the Historic Zoning Commission by Mayor Jim Bingham, recommendation to council for approval for term of office.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Councilman Crutcher makes the motion, second by Councilman Burns, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item I, request for the reappointment of Bill Marsh to the Water and Sewer Board for a new two-year term, as his current term expires June 1, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion, is there a second? Councilman Crutcher seconds the motion, is there discussion? Robinson, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item J, request for the reappointment of Emily Gordon to the Stormwater Board of Appeals for a new one-year term, as her current term expires on June 1, 2025. The reappointment comes at the recommendation of Stacy Martin for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion, is there a second?
A second.
This time I get it correct, as Councilman Crutcher seconds the motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item K, request for reappointment of Barbara Woods to the Stormwater Board of Appeals for a new two-year term, as her term expires on June 1, 2025. This reappointment comes at the recommendation of Stacy Martin for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion it.
Councilman Crutcher makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion, is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item L, request for the reappointment of Barbara Woods to the Tree City USA Committee for a new two-year term. As her current term expires on June first, twenty twenty-five, this reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingo- Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
So.
Pardon me?
So moved.
Councilwoman Robinson makes the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Crutcher seconds the motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item M, request for the reappointment of Director of Parks and Rec, Carrie Weitzel, to the Tree City USA Committee for a new two-year term. As her current term expires June first, twenty twenty-five, this reappointment comes at the recommendation of Jim, Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Councilwoman Crutcher makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Thomas seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item N, request for the reappointment of Andrea Worf to the Tree City USA Committee for a new two-year term. As her term expires on June first, twenty twenty-five, this reappointment comes at the recommendation of Mayor Jim Bingham for council approval.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Robinson seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item O, request for the appointment of Councilman Robin- Ronald Robinson to the Tree City USA Committee by Mayor Jim Bingham. Recommendation to the council for approval for term of office.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Michael makes the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Crutcher seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item P, consider approval of resolution twenty-five dash oh nine, a resolution to install of a four-way stop with traffic-controlled device at intersection of Eighth Avenue South and Cedar Street.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to revisit this, this, if, if that's possible, because I got some information today.
I think you have to defer. It'd be a motion to defer.
Okay, a motion to defer.
How long?
Just to the next meeting.
Yeah, can we, can we hear, let's just hear that information?
The, well, it's, it's about the school board. Talks with the school board. The buses, this, like, it's on, going on, I think it's Cedar Street. It's, it's a stop sign that's right there. They have to, they already have to loop around, so it's not that I don't want, want it to happen. It just, I just, if we could just get another, just the next bump. Because I, to, 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 I guess, I mean, me and you could go, go discuss it with them too, as well. So we could get a better understanding of what's going on, because it's, they said it's, it's already hard for them to get through, from Eighth to Cedar Street.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Because they have the loop at them with the stop sign being there. That will be hard for the buses to do it, so.
Yeah, now, now, Mayor, just, just to elaborate on that, Shannon's the one that, that told me about the neighborhood to start with, and it was in my ward, so that's why I brought it.
Correct.
I'm, I'm willing to yield to another town.
Well, we need a second before discussion, so do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilwoman Michael seconds. Okay, now, continue.
Okay. But, 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 yeah, we can work together on it, and if it's, uh, if the, if the school's got a problem with it or anything. Because I, I'm kind of neutral on it right now, anyway.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I could, I could go either way. If it's, if it helps the kids and helps the schools.
Correct.
You know, I'd, I'd be for it, but if it's, it's something that's not, then, you know, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm not pressing either way.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd yield to the council until we could go break for the next work session.
Yeah, next work session. Work, work session, so we can, I'll dig more into it.
Sure, sure. I'm agreeable with that.
Uh, additional discussion? Call the roll, please.
Okay, so this is a motion to defer until next June meeting. Uh, Councilman.
Next work session.
Work session. Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item?
Item Q, consider approval of resolution twenty-five dash ten, a resolution to support the TVA Columbia Dam project on the Duck River.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Burns seconds that motion. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I, I guess just listening to, to them out there, I'd rather wave this one to the sec- to the next meeting and have more discussion about it, too. If that's possible. All right, I agree. Because it's, it's just, I guess, just because I didn't, I don't.
We, we have to, we have, there's a motion on the table. We got to do that first, and. Help us, Mr. Hutto.
Um, well, during discussion, someone could make a motion to defer, and that would take precedence over the one on the table. That's how that works, and, um, simply, and if, and if the motion to defer succeeded, then it would just be placed on next month's agenda. If it didn't succeed, then you all would vote on the main motion tonight.
So, Councilwoman, are, Crutcher, are you making the motion?
Yeah.
To defer?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
To defer to June?
To the next.
To the next, just the next.
Work session?
Actually, I would prefer it to be July.
Work session?
Yeah, because I won't, I won't be here until, to June.
So you're second still there?
Yep, I want to be here in June, too.
Okay.
You'll be, you'll be here June.
Okay, is there further discussion on that?
Back to which take the motion second, so we know what we're voting on.
The motion is, uh, by Councilwoman Crutcher to defer to June's meeting. Is that, July's meeting, sorry, July's meeting, and seconded by Mr. Councilman Robertson.
Additional discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
No.
Councilwoman Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. That's deferred then, till the July meeting. Okay, next item?
Do we go back, Mr. Hutto, to the, uh, reg?
No.
No, okay, all right. Um, item R, consider approval of resolution twenty-five eleven, a resolution to accept the Street Cambridge Court located in the Chatham Estate subdivision, Phase Two, uh, Section Two for ownership and maintenance.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Councilwoman Robinson makes that motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Crutcher seconds that motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Aye.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Aye.
Uh, no, as I said earlier about my mistakes, you notice I haven't skipped one yet?
Item, item six, consider approval of resolution twenty-five dash twelve, a resolution to accept the Street Shannon Court located in the McCord subdivision for ownership and maintenance.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Councilwoman Robinson makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Michael seconds the motion. Is there discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Michael?
Yes.
Councilwoman Crutcher?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item?
Item T, consider approval of resolution twenty-five dash thirteen, a rela- resolution to authorize the purchase and install of a traffic calming device, Speedhump on Oak Farmington Road.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilwoman Thomas makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Burns seconds that motion. Is there discussion?